We will now move to Agenda Item 29, which is Home Key 2.0 Habitat for Humanity Presentation. We will have Mr. Ben Moody coming to podium. Before Mr. Moody takes the podium tonight to talk about this project, I want to bring us all up to speed on where we're at with this project and why we're here tonight. Because that's one thing we need to be crystal clear on. With what we have before us tonight, this council is not expected to make a single decision tonight. So I want to be clear on that. We're not expected to make a single decision tonight. So this is not the project's going forward, or the project's not going forward. This project hit our radar a very short time ago. There are tons of questions, which I'm sure you have and we have. And we've all had the ability, I think most of us have, to sit down with Mr. Nicoletti and go through the project, which just led into more questions, and we've heard from the public as well. So it's very important tonight that as we get through the presentation, we hear from the public, the departments, our city team, the council, with all questions that we all have. And I want to take it one step further, so you know where I'm expecting this to go. Once we're done tonight, we will take more additional questions through 5:00 PM tomorrow, if they can be emailed to the city clerk. Because we want to make sure we get all questions answered before this comes to us for a decision. So Sierra, can you give us your email address that they would be able to send questions to you at?
Cityclerk@ubacity.net.
All right, that is cityclerk@ubacity.net. So with that, Mr. Moody, you have the floor, my friend.
All right, so good evening, Mayor Shaw, members of the council. So the item before you as discussed, it's really, this is a workshop informational session from Habitat for Humanity from Uba Sutter to basically talk about a proposed project, Home Key 2.0, at the Bonanza Inn on 1001 Clark Avenue. And so there's no necessary action tonight. There'll be a presentation from Habitat. Sutter County Health and Human Services is available for questions also, and also from the city. And so we've heard loud and clear from the community and internally from staff, you know, about what this project, what does that mean? You know, and there's questions regarding how does this affect the community positively and/or negatively? Concerns from the neighbors, nearby businesses, is this an attractive nuisance? Or is it operated in a way to help alleviate homeless in the Uba City? What is being proposed at the convention center and the restaurant? Long-term stability of the site, management, business plan? Needed human health services provided by Sutter County and those ongoing costs? Is there a way to prioritize so it serves Sutter County, Uba City residents? And then just what is the revenue loss to the city and those ongoing commitments that are needed? And so Habitat is here today to help answer that questions and walk through their proposed project. And then also, it's an opportunity for the public that's been noticed to share some of their concerns and ask those questions. And then again, staff will take those questions and coordinate with the clerk and try to put a response, so the public has those for everybody. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Habitat for Humanity.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph Hale, and I work with Habitat for Humanity at Uba Sutter. And we're going to talk a little bit about the Home Key project and how all those functions work. I also have a lot of paperwork here that I can give to individuals in the community to kind of see what we're doing and how all those functions work out. All right. So let me see, it might take a second to get this right. Let me see if I'm going the right way. All right, there we go. So Habitat for Humanity, if, for those not familiar with it, is a housing builder. One of the things that we do is we will build new homes for families, sell those to families, and create a sense of homeownership. We do disaster relief, permanent housing, such as the project we're going to talk about tonight. And we also do home renovations. So if there's individuals who are homeowners, but they don't have the funding to be able to take care of much-needed issues with the house, we can work on that. So one of the things that I do want to make clear, because I know it creates often a lot of confusion, is we're not a homeless services provider. We work with them for various avenues that we're into. And this program is not a homeless, just a homeless program. It is a permanent housing program. This is where individuals will live for long-term. These individuals aren't living there for free. These individuals pay rent, just like everyone else, and live under the same rental conditions as other people. So this isn't a shelter and won't be operated like a shelter. So we really focus on a hand-up approach when we're doing services in the community. So talking a little bit about the Home Key program. So the Home Key program that came from the 2020 CARES Act funding. Basically, with the loss of jobs, all the elements that had been created by the situation with COVID, it created various funding sources to help support and supplement communities. They put aside $1.45 billion into the community to be able to provide opportunities for this program throughout the state. The state used this to focus on purchasing hotel facilities, because they didn't want people to purchase existing apartment complexes, because those were already filled with people, and we don't want to have to relocate. Hotels, especially in our situation, which had very limited rentals, the one we're working with now had a very low number of people occupying it because of everything going on. So people weren't traveling as much. So a great opportunity to use those as a way to alleviate the issue with the lack of affordable housing in communities. So the goal is to partner with the city of Uba City on this project and submit an application. And that application would go in in January, in the end of January, if everything comes to fruition and there's interest from the city and the community. The other element that's important to know is there is no local funding that is required to be able to make this program work. This program is fully funded through Home Key. That covers the acquisition of the property, that covers the renovations to the property, and also provides supplemental program funding. One of the great benefits for that is if, you know, it's funding that if it doesn't come here, it's just going to go to LA, some other area. That's going to use up the same funding, but it offers an opportunity for us to bring funding into this community. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the problems facing the Uba Sutter region. We have, in our situation, rental rates that have been increasing from $1,200 to $1,500 for one- and two-bedroom apartments. And you're seeing people, especially the elderly individuals, making around $1,100 a month. One of the things we are seeing is the highest rate of elderly individuals entering into homelessness, because they don't have funding. An $1,100 social security check doesn't pay a $1,200 rent. So they go and they seek programs, they try to get vouchers. A lot of programs don't take vouchers, because a voucher has a cap on it. So the Housing Authority will issue a lot of vouchers to people, and a lot of renters won't take it, because if a voucher is only worth $788, and they want $1,200, well, that's a huge gap. And so you're seeing a lot of the situation, especially now. There's a real big lack of affordable housing in our area. One of the other elements that occurs is when you're dealing with the homeless situation, especially for those involved in law enforcement. I feel really bad for those who work in that area, because they're kind of trying to do this job and dealing with homeless with an arm tied behind their back. Because there are situations that are put in place that say, it's not against the law to be homeless, so if they can't be on private property, then in public property is the only option. That's where they got to go. Those are the only two options. If someone doesn't want them on their private property, they go onto public property. If a law enforcement officer approaches them, they really have to give them direction on where they can go. They have to be able to go, hey, you can't be there, I have a shelter, or I have a place for you to be able to go to. If they can't do that, they're limited on what they can do. And the individual stays in that location. And you end up, and with our situation, we're just increasing in homeless numbers because of this lack of affordable housing. So it creates concerns for the community members, people who want to go to the park, if they can't access the park, because there's a large amount of people there camping or living, because that's the location that they have. So when you have affordable housing, I think it's better than doing more and more and more shelters, because if you keep putting people in shelters and you don't have a place for them to go, you just grow more shelters and you grow a population who are experiencing homelessness. If you can take them and you can maneuver them into a situation where they can find housing, then you need less shelters and you just build affordable housing. Once they go through the process, are able to move into a place, they work with caseworkers, go through a process. Sometimes that waiting list can be a very long time. But they eventually get into a situation where now they have housing, and now there's one less individual who's on there. Some of the reasons that you may see that there's still a big burden, or there's a lot of individuals out there, is because in addition to the homeless population we currently have, people enter into homelessness. As you have housing that's not available to them, it increases that number. They don't have a place to go, rents increase. You know, there's only so many houses available. And, you know, this is a good way of preventing those increases, getting control of it, and working through that program. So I did want to say that we did get letters, just to kind of show this program, from both the Sheriff's County, or Sheriff's Office of Uba County, and the Sheriff's Office of Sutter County, that I'd love to share with all of you. I won't read the whole letters. I'd love to give them to you and read what the sheriffs had to say about the situation. But the overall is a huge decrease in the number of criminal activity, number of law enforcement calls. One example is calls going from 187 in one year at one hotel facility to just 27, with most of those related to health issues. And none related to any level of high crime. And this is a facility that's been in operation for over a year. And that's the change that's been seen. Same thing in Uba County, it'll show that the numbers decreased. So when we're talking about the volume of need, the situation that we're dealing with, this is numbers from HUD that I think the city submitted to them within the last couple of years. This shows that there are 11,509 people of the 65,000 residents that were listed during this study that are living in poverty in Uba City. That's one out of 5.7 people. So that's a good percentage of the population who are dealing with that. And if things, you don't create affordable housing, the number will continue to go up. You know, there's some variances between the number of homeless, depending on the study, anywhere from 500 to 1,000. But one thing out of this data that we were able to pull is that 92% show to be long-term residents. That's people who are a part of this community, may have been born here or lived in this community a good portion of their life. So I know there's concerns that homeless go to places where there's available resources. But the reality is, the available resources take a long, long time. So we don't get a lot of influx, because you have waiting lists. We have a waiting list of 714 people who need housing. A huge number of those are elderly individuals. People who have medical care, people the hospital can't release until they have a safe place for them to go, because their medical needs are significant. So that's a big part of what we look at when we're doing this program. So this isn't our first project. We've had a number of projects that we have worked on. Two that are similar to this are Harmony Village off of Highway 99. That had 62 units, but we worked and were able to create another unit during the remodel process. So, because we want to maximize the efficiency and services that we can provide. So that is off of 99, for any of those who want to visit it. Get to that later. We do do tours, and we do want the community to see all the things that we're doing and be very transparent with that. The other project is behind Walmart called Prosperity Village. That is another 62-unit facility. So that's 125 people that are going to be able to get out of poverty, not no longer be at risk of homelessness, because they have services available to them. So the program that we're looking at, it would be 130 units of low-income apartments. And this is usually for singles or couples. As I had said before, it's not a homeless shelter, it's a permanent housing. And we focus on individuals who are experiencing, or who are elderly, disabled, and veterans. So that's our major focus. And like I said, there's no length of stay limits. This is permanent housing, so they're not going to be out on the street a month later dealing with this same repetitive problem. If, say, they're an individual who is homeless. And this service is not just for homeless individuals, it's also for those who are at risk. We have a lot of people who are in a situation where they're going to lose their home. And a ton of it is happening very quickly. So as I said, they have rental agreements, they're going to follow all the same rules. And we estimate, with this type of project, based on the numbers we have at other sites, that we're going to probably host about 25% of veterans at that site. We have a lot of military veterans who served this country, who ended up in, you know, a situation where they can't work, they're on disability. One of the veterans living at Harmony Village had lost his arm. And he isn't able to do function and work in a normal environment, lives off of disability, and that's what he can afford. And we work with the Veterans Affairs Office to help provide services to those individuals. So one of the other elements that we do is we want to keep the environment safe. We want to be good neighbors to those in the community. So one of the things that we also provide is we're going to have a secure place. We're going to have 24/7 staff, we're going to have a gated community. You know, guests who come there check in as part of the process. You know, and the residents will all be from the local area. I know that is a concern in the community, that we're not bringing people that we're serving. Well, you know, we have a big enough waiting list to be able to serve just those here in the community, by far. In fact, even after we serve them, there's still going to be a lot that still have need, just because of the numbers we're dealing with in this community. We are very careful, we don't let people park RVs on the property. Vehicles who are on it have to be registered. You know, those are important elements, we want to make sure we're not having anything going on out there, so we keep it safe by doing that. We're going to have individuals that are staying there, like I said, are mostly local residents. We do have a couple, one exception. One of the allowances that's required by the state of California is anyone who is escaping domestic violence. Say if they escape to this community, we still have to be able to provide that resource to them. We don't see that as a big number. We haven't had that happen with our projects as of yet. But that is something that could occur. So that's something that we look at. We provide management counseling, there's going to be medical services. One of the things we do at Harmony Village is every Friday Adventist Health comes out. We have a large number of elderly people who are there, who have prescriptions. They'll come out, they'll deliver prescriptions, provide supplies, do checkups on individuals' health, because, you know, they don't have a great degree of transportation, based because of their income. So... So we engaged staff on this project about three months ago, but there's a lot of work in getting to the process before it gets to this point that it comes to the council. So, you know, they want to make sure that the project's feasible. They want to make sure that, you know, we go through all those processes to show that we can really develop a good management plan and something that's going to be a good structure for the city of Uba City. So that's one of the avenues that we went through. And then in the last month, it was brought before the board, so we could do this community outreach. One of the things we determined is the Bonanza Inn would be a great opportunity. One of the reasons it has a large number of units. It's an older building that has a lot of repair needs. Some of the stuff's not available, like the restaurants are closed, the convention center's currently closed, because of things that need to be done to get it right. This allows us to bring funding into the community to renovate this building, bring it to a really like-new condition, so that we can start providing these services, so we thought it was great for that. We also know that they're opening, I believe, two to four new hotels in the area. And, you know, that makes a good availability for a facility like that there as well, just because there'll, you know, individuals wanting to go to hotels will have a lot more options in the near future. We made an agreement with the owner on the property, if we are to go forward, they are willing to sell and are working with us on that. We also would fund it through Home Key, as I had mentioned before. You know, all those services would be covered under that. We want to do some additions to the property. We would add, you know, decorative fence, solar, we do the ADA upgrades, there's fire sprinklers, there's other elements that the facility needs as part of that facelift, that we'd be more than willing to do to make it a good and safe site. So I want to talk about partners. So we have a number of partners, obviously, when you're doing a project of this magnitude, you're going to have a number of people who are going to be involved in it. One, an organization we've worked with for five years, who has an executive director who's been working, doing casework for 17 years, is partnering with us on the project. So they would provide onsite supportive services. A lot of these individuals still need, like I said, the medical supplies, various things. They need, some of them have counseling, work to help get benefits that they may need. We also work with Sutter County Health and Human Services, they do a lot of referrals. We work with them at Harmony Village. They wouldn't be onsite in that capacity, but we would still work with them to make sure that the individuals who need the services are getting HHS services, you know, the services that are available to all of us here, if we qualify income-wise. So we'll coordinate with them on those elements. Adventist Health, we're going to work to build the same relationship we have at Harmony Village, where they can bring out prescriptions to individuals. As I said, the focus is elderly, so we're going to have a large number of people who are going to have a lot of need. So that's one of the elements we're going to work towards in this. We also work with the Housing Authority. We have a number of people who have vouchers, who work within our system. A lot of times, we'll look at those individuals for getting into a project like this, because it gives them some more civility to have the voucher in place. Especially if they're an individual who has a very low income, it gives them more money to be able to purchase food and other needs. We will also be working with Veterans Affairs. We've worked with them for the last couple of years with Harmony Village. They, one of the great things about the Veterans Affairs is also, they do the referrals. They're able to typically provide vouchers that can help fund housing. And they provide casework for the veterans. So individuals who are there, they'll be able to provide various services for, to help support the program. All right, so hopping over, I know this is a lot of information, so... But it's definitely important to go over. One of the things I want to talk about now is basically the grant submission. So Habitat would apply with the city of Uba City if this goes forward through a competitive grant process, and we'd request 25 million. I know that sounds like an awful lot of money, but a lot of that goes to program services and other elements. 13,250,000 is for the acquisition. It actually appraised 1 million over that, which was good, because that's within the alignment. And then the rehabilitation cost, we anticipate for about 4 million. And then the supplemental program funding, that we're going to try and break down over a 20-year period, is going to be about 2.5 million. So those are kind of the elements. You can see that that total number does not add up to that 25 million. The reason I list the 25 million is, when you apply for grants, you apply for more than you need, because if additional resources become available, they become an option. If, say, you were looking at some repair costs you were off, that's additional money you can look at being able to acquire for that. So it gives us a higher amount we can apply for. So at the end of it, we're going to apply for what we need to do the program, and hopefully what we can get supplemented over that 20-year period. In addition, Habitat for Humanity, our organization, is going to be providing about 3/4 of a million in materials and renovation stuff for this project. We have lots of material from Global Furniture, which is a big donor, which provides office supplies, so we'll be able to fully set up offices there. We get roofing material, we get IKEA cabinets, Valspar paint, Whirlpool appliances. We just get a lot of things from international donors that are going to help reduce the cost of getting this project renovated. So we're going to provide that as part of this. We also have a Restore. Are any of you familiar with the Restore we have in Marysville? Okay. Oh, well, there's a lot that aren't, so we'll have to get you some information on that. But, so the Restore is a discount home improvement center. And what it does is it collects donated materials, mostly new, that we resell to the public. And all the funds that get generated create a general income account for Habitat that we can use to supplement projects. One of the great elements of the Restore that we love to do is we love to use it as funding gaps. So everyone who's in the grant world, you apply for grants for a program, and you hope you get funded. You hope that, but it doesn't always happen. So having a source of revenue that can fill in those gaps when we have them is really, really helpful. And happy to say, the Restore actually generates, as a kind of a thrift store-type setup, 1.1 million a year. So it is a big fundraiser for the organization, and it supports a huge amount of projects in the area. We also, looking at the facility, because there's going to be people paying rents, there's 130 units. When we look at that over the span of a year, that based on what we estimate the average rent to be, that's about 780,000. On the most efficient end, that's pretty close to what we feel our basic operating costs are going to be there. However, on the higher end, we hope to, we'd supplement grant funding, or we would utilize the supplemental funding that's available to the program. And that would offset costs. If we run out of it, then we can supplement it with funding from our Restore or in writing grants. So we feel pretty strong that we have a very long-term ability to be successful in this project. And that's based on a 20-year span. So if everything goes through, if the city agrees, if the community accepts this project as a whole, we would look to have a resolution at the next council meeting on January 18th, and would invite you all there as well. And if that goes through, we would work to get the grant submitted. We've packaged a lot of the material before the end of the month. In late March is when we estimate we would receive this award, if approved. And we would hopefully acquire the Bonanza in May, which is when the rehabilitation to the building would commence, and hopefully be completed in October. And we'd probably start moving people in in November of next year. So it's kind of, we are with the schedule right now. All right, so community benefit. Looking at the project, we think it helps the city towards meeting its goals of low-income housing. I know they've done a housing element, and we understand that that is seen as pretty much the biggest need in the city right now, is this lack of affordable housing. We estimate that there's 130 units, but some of them will be couples. So we see that actually providing for about 140 to 160 people. We are going to be able to provide the necessary maintenance and upgrades to an aging building. One of the problems that often happens when a hotel or facility gets older, you get a lot of deferred maintenance. Then if someone's not budgeting for it, and in an economy where hotels weren't doing very well for a while, you have a lot of deferred maintenance. And you start having structural issues, you start having problems. Then you end up with a derelict building, perhaps in the future, that, and empty buildings become places where people spend time, because a person who's experiencing homelessness wants to be able to, they don't want to be out in public, they want to find a place that they can feel safe and secure. So a lot of times, it comes to finding a place that's, you know, an abandoned building or something like that. So our goal is, with the opportunity, with the funding available, let's bring it back to a new condition. We also think it will reduce the impact on law enforcement by a significant amount. We think that individuals who get into this program, you know, I know hotels can typically draw trouble. That's, I don't think that's untypical in that experience, especially when they get older and they're more accepting of a wider range of people. You start to see more and more problems. So that's something that we're hoping to offset. And, you know, based on these letters that, like I said, we can provide to you, I think they show that. So it's not just kind of telling you our hopes, it's showing you examples of these successes that have occurred. I think, and the project will also, like I didn't, I put $6 million. I know we're asking for a lot more. But when you buy the property from the owner, if the owner doesn't spend money in this area, it doesn't matter. But we know that between renovations, program services, we're going to generate about $6 million. program services, we're going to generate about $6 million worth of revenue into the community for companies that build, do those sorts of works, also hiring employees to be able to provide services in the community, so it's going to employ people. So, item 10 is the long-term care of the facility. So Habitat does have a long-term obligation on this project. Projects of this type, they want to see going for a long time, so this one has a 55-year commitment as far as being, that property being used to serve this cause. Now, that doesn't mean it has to for that full length of time. The initial commitment is for five years that the, these services would be provided at that site because of the grant award, and then after that, if someone doesn't want to continue that service, things change, the property can be sold, a grant payment can be refunded, and the commitment would end if that would be the desire of a city or a community, or, you know, we could, if, we needed to, say, if there was an issue ever with our organization, situation where we dissolved. The city could make the decision to provide it to another organization, such as the Housing Authority, to manage the same process, sell the property, there's a number of options. Our goal, as this organization, we've been around for almost 30 years and plan to be around, and we don't think the housing need's going to end anytime soon, are willing to stay and be strong with that commitment, but I wanted to also present that worst-case This would be Habitat's sixth facility, three, third of this type in the community. One of the great things we have is Habitat is a builder. If you go out in Linda, we have a 36-unit development, we're building 36 brand-new homes, we're mostly done with this project now. We're actually going to build a nice park in the community along with it. We work with dozens of contractors in the area. We spend about, I want to say 8 million, 8 million or more per year in building structures and doing these types of work. So we have great relationships in that community, we have a huge operations team. And our operations team is a licensed contractor. And we have eight staff who oversee, maintain these buildings. And, you know, we have, we also, when there's issues, other issues, we'll work with subcontractors to make sure, because we want to keep this nice. We don't want this to turn into like a slumlord type of situation. We want the building to look very nice, and if you go out and visit Harmony Village, you can see that level of commitment. All right, so community involvement and tours. One of the things that we think is very, very important in this community is we want the community involved. One of the things we love to do is, we love to give, who want to give tours, for any of those who are involved, who want to see this, be a part of this project, we'd love to show you everything that we're doing. We are willing, we can provide you a management plan, so you can see how the property's being managed. You know, we also work to establish a committee of residents, so that not only can you see the project or hope that we fulfill our wishes, which we believe we will, but you can be a part of that decision-making. You can serve on a committee that helps oversee this type of project, because Habitat as an organization is a part of the community. We're an arm of the community that provides a service to help support, and we feel that need is housing. You know, I also wanted to say that there were a lot of Home Key projects that were done last year, there were over 40 projects done in the community. And of those 40 projects, there were three that were selected that were running well, running efficient operations, great partners with the community, and HUD, or, sorry, HCD chose us as one of those. So we were able to do an effective project that they saw exemplified this kind of service and this kind of support in the community. So I brought a whole bunch of these packets to share as well, so you can kind of see some of the things that we're doing. So I have two people here, if you want to raise your hands, John Nicoletti, Camille Thomas, and they are, if you haven't gone on a tour or worked with them, they are social butterflies. They are great members of the community, and John would love to do site tours, that's, that's one of the things he gets, I think, a lot of joy in, and I put his contact information on here. And Camille Thomas as well, she's, works with the committee that we had established with Harmony Village to handle, or to basically hear perspectives of people in the community. So she's an individual that would likely work with you if this goes to fruition. So, and really, that is, I tried to go a little quick, so I didn't take up too much time, but that is really the overview of the project, and would love to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring Mr. Moody back up to the podium, as he can finish up the city's presentation, because I think Mr. Moody has things to share with us as well, and then we'll bring it to the council for questions.
Yeah, thank you. So Habitat is, is great. I mean, Joseph, what John Nicoletti do in our community is, is really awesome. I went on one of the tours through the facility, looked at the Harmony Village, looked at what they're doing in Linda, and with the available funding and the resources they have, it is truly great. And the city recognizes that there's an affordable housing need, and we want to partner for that affordable housing need. Looking at it at a staff level, you know, basically looking at this with the city and reviewing it with the different departments, our job is to provide the information straight, you know, to the council, so you can make a decision. And, and so with that, there, there is real concern regarding ongoing operations. What the, what the commitment is, there's, there's a real value to the TOT tax that's lost going forward. There's, due to the, the state of the building, there will be ongoing capital costs for fire sprinklers, you know, ongoing maintenance for structural stuff, or roofs, plans for services, what we need to coordinate with the county on what that, that ultimate need is, and how that works out, and what we need to partner with the county to help facilitate that need. And so we just want to make sure with the community that we're going into and making a decision wide, eyes wide open, and so that's, that's where they, and again, Habitat is working through that, and, and again, there, there's, but that's where it's really looking at what the project is taking on with a 55-year commitment, and then understanding you're getting affordable housing for the city, but there's also a commitment with that from the city. And so I'm here to have, and happy to answer any more questions.
All right, thank you all. I'll bring it to the council first for any questions that they may have at this time.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Moody. First, I echo your comments about the wonderful work that, that Joseph and, and John do with Habitat for Humanity, tremendous community resource, Cami, I know you're involved with that as well and others, so I, I don't want these to be taken as necessarily negative, but these are some of my concerns going forward, that, that I've, I've developed myself, plus those who have raised those to me. And I also want to thank John and Joseph for meeting with me this morning, and taking some time out of their day to address some of the concerns and questions I had. I think first and foremost, you know, anytime you introduce a project like this, neighborhood compatibility becomes an issue. And so that remains a concern of mine, is that we, we have people who live in this particular area that have raised legitimate concerns to me about what's going on. So as we move forward with this project, I think your ability to reach out and, and take into consideration what those folks may have, and any mitigation measures that might be able to, might be able to be taken to address any of their concerns. As a steward of the city's finances, looking at the long-term financial commitment, our impact to Uba City is, is important to me. I mean, it's easy right now, as a former public official, I understand that grant funding's awesome, but occasionally, grant funding dries up, and we saw that in my personal experience with the fire department. We had funding for, for staffing for, for many years, and then it dried up, and then we had to dip into our own pocket. So long-term sustainability of a, of a revenue source, and I know you guys are super aggressive at, at grant funding, but eventually, that may erode or evaporate, and that becomes a concern of mine. Support from Sutter County, I know Mr. Smith is here, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I, I raised that with, with both of you this morning, you know, I've heard kind of mixed messages. So, you know, as we move forward here, it'd be important for our partners at Sutter County to weigh in on, on what they're able to, to provide, and any needs that are necessary to support whatever comes into this Home Key project. There are some great concepts here, and, you know, I've heard different things over the, the several months, and they seem a bit fluid. I really like to nail it down. I'd really like to know more about, okay, this is what's going to happen inside this Bonanza property, and I think there's some, some partnership opportunities there, but at this point, you know, like, to me, it's, it's about a business plan or a pro forma, if you will. What's actually going to go here? Let's try to nail that down a bit. I'm concerned that, you know, typically, a project like this comes to the city, and then there's, there's requests for concessions, right? You're going to want us to waive fees, and you're going to want us to do certain things, and as a partner, you know, we have to take that into consideration. I don't know what those are right now, so I'd be interested to know more about that as we move forward. Long-term costs, you mentioned, you know, that this is good for five years, but there's a 55-year commitment from the City of Uba City. One thing would be great is, you know, a project like this can be really great, but if John and Joseph, and I mentioned this to you this morning, if John and Joseph go away, then who's there to continue with the project? There's a lot of confidence with you two gentlemen, and, and, and the organization that you're running, and the work that you've done, but what happens if we lose both of you? Or if Habitat for Humanity becomes, as you mentioned, maybe a part of a bigger entity, and we lose some of that local control? And so I, I'm, I'm concerned about that, and I hope maybe we can have more dialogue about that. Revenue reduction, we talked a little bit about the TOT. I know we forgot some figures on that, so I, I don't know that I need to really follow up on that. I understand what I think that means to us as far as TOT tax and et cetera. Neighborhood mitigation, I would strongly encourage you to engage with those folks who live around you. I know you've begun that process. I don't know if there's things you could do that maybe would address their needs, but they've been very vocal, at least to me, in regards to their deep concern for what might happen in their neighborhood. And as a, as a resident of Uba City, and one that's elected to represent folks, I think we need to take that into consideration. I'm also a little concerned about scale. You guys are growing quickly, you're doing great things. And so I'd like to, to know a little bit more about your ability to continue to support these great projects, and, and, and provide the level of, of leadership and guidance, you know, as you go from a 60, and I can't remember the numbers exactly, but now you're going to double that, and you've got other stuff on the plate here, so that's important to me. You know, other than that, you know, I, I think we're engaged in a process, as the mayor said, of, of beginning the process of learning more about what this is all about, engaging the public in that dialogue, taking into consideration all, all the positives and the negatives, and, you know, I, I think, I think it's great, you guys came here and began the process of informing us as a community and as a council, and I look forward to getting answers to some of those questions, and, and seeing where this all ends up. Thank you.
You're the mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Boob Garn's insights. It's, the discussion of affordable housing is an issue that we need to carry on longer than in this particular time today. I've had, I have been very fortunate to be able to be part of the homeless consortium, and have been part of the consortium for over 20 years. So the relationships of what Habitat has done, I have seen the growth from the original work that they've done to where they're at now. One thing that, I, I mean, you covered a, a great list of, of concerns. I think one of the initial things that when I was aware as a council member of this issue, that I shared with Joseph, there you are, and Scott Thurman at that time, because I'm a firm believer that if we're going to look at any kind of project that may be in place of a community, that you involve the community that lives there. That you begin the conversation with those individuals and not, you know, as it feels, I think, for the community, because I've been out there and, and observing it directly myself yesterday, and I think sometimes it feels like this is almost kind of a last-minute kind of push of a conversation, which is, I think, not appreciated much in our community. And I've shared that with you, John, and I do have concerns about that. Affordable housing is needed. There are a lot of people in need. I want to help. The thing that concerns me is the, the aspect of, of the location, the ability for sustainability of this project long-term, after five years of contract services, whatever that may look like. Those are concerns, and I have been, I think, very upfront about all of those issues. I'm not saying anything differently to you than I would say to a person who lives in the community, because I think people can vouch for that. I think that there are hopefully some other opportunities. Are there other hotels in our community area? Because Home Key Project is not just a one location, you know, there's possibly other areas in our community that we could explore. I don't know if our staff has made any such possibility, but I, I definitely understand the nature of grant writing. As a grant writer myself for over 30 years, I, I understand the last-minute requests and how to try to pull all these projects together. I think from one of five here, my message is not against affordable housing. I am for when we build affordable housing, and I believe a lot of our community wants to help people find homes for themselves. I think that we just need to approach it where we include them in the conversation early on, not towards the last, feeling like the last minute of where we're heading in a decision, which today, we make no decision, but that's where I'm at with this.
Mr. Mayor.
Through the mayor, thank you. And thank, thank you to Joseph for that presentation, and to Nick, Mr. John Nicoletti, for his leadership on this program. I think we can all agree that affordable housing, we're at a critical, critical stage in this, at least in this state, it is an issue, and, and this, this group of people up here hear about it all the time. And I don't want to repeat anything that's already been said, but I do have a couple of questions. Joseph, as far as community benefits, you mentioned that it would, it would reduce the impact, impact on law enforcement currently at the Bonanza.
Yeah, we absolutely believe that. I mean, one of the things that we have seen across both projects is a huge decrease in criminal activity and things like that going on at these sites. And it, and like I said, I didn't want to just give our word on it, and that's why I had the letters. I can read the letter if you want.
No, I, I, maybe, I direct the question at chief. What is the current law enforcement issues that you're seeing at the Bonanza?
I actually have some numbers from... 2019, we responded to 80 calls for service for the police department there, in 2020, 100 calls for service. I, I wouldn't call that an inordinate amount of calls for service at a location like that. A lot of those calls are folks just not wanting to leave at the proper time the next day. By recollection, Commander Ashman could correct me if I'm wrong, I don't recall any very violent, continued violent crimes occurring at that location. I know the fire department provided their, their numbers as well, and per Chief Alexander, there, again, there's not an inordinate amount of fire department response to that location either.
Thank you for that, chief. And the second question I have for Joseph is, you mentioned that the apartments that are bordering the Bonanza are currently listed as low-income?
Well, so a number, I know there's individual, some individuals who have vouchers there, but I believe there's, you know, there is an apartment complex, this is a very similar type of service. The majority of people who do live in apartments are, fall within that low-income range, and I believe there is a significant number there who are in that situation. And I don't have the, the numbers in front of me, I just know that some are vouchered. So really, I think what we're doing is really what's attached on the next property. There's apartments there, these would really become additional apartments.
Okay.
So I don't think it would be outside of what's already located right next to it.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much. Also echo that, much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Also echo that, much appreciated on the presentations and the ride-along on the tour the other day, John. I have to simply echo, since you beat me to the punch, that some of the things that Councilmember Boomgarden brought up is the long-term sustainability. We have, we have a 20-year plan. We have some five years in there, but the city is technically on the hook for, I think it's 54 years. And then a lot of changes will be made. If you play the odds, most of us will not be here around that time. And so we might want to make sure we don't leave a, a time bomb for the folks that follow behind all of us. And so any, any plan has to be viable and, and sustainable. And I would like to hear more about that and if we have any more, anything we can hang our hat on as far as the guarantees, if you will, or next best thing to that, as far as the city's obligation. And I say all these things under, under the stipulation that, of course, we are for affordable housing. I mean, beyond for affordable housing. Any, any opportunity we can have to make that happen for folks, we're there. But I go back to community accountability and the, and the folks that live near there. I've gotten many calls and a really lengthy email that I read several times. And I, I know that if I was in that situation, I'd be writing the same thing. I live near a group home right now across the street, and yeah, I'm lucky enough to where there's no issues, other than the kids sitting on the roof smoking, but whatever. But it, that's not a huge deal. And I know the experiences of the folks down at South Sutter County and Oswald there have been great. And all the concerns that were brought up, I mean, it's easy to make assumptions. This, this type of person, in my mind, that I'm not familiar with this type of person means they're going to bring this activity. Simply has not been the experience. In fact, the management from Habitat has really done a good job vetting and holding folks accountable and keeping a lid on things down there, in my, what I have heard and seen. But I, I too would like to see some, some outreach. I'm not aware of what has happened already with the residents there. I don't blame them one bit. They don't know what they don't know, so maybe they, maybe the folks will do a good job and be good neighbors. But there's a potential there, you know, that they might not be. And so if there's any type of mitigation that can be put in place above and beyond what has already been planned, that would give me some comfort level for them. We want, we want the right fit for the, the right project, for the right fit in the right area. As Councilwoman and Spandola mentioned, maybe we can, there's some other alternatives as well, either instead of or additional, additional to this one. But that is my, one of my biggest things. There's a lot of things also that come with that. And Joe, is there going to be services provided on this? Is the plan include services, yeah, on this location for folks that aren't necessarily residents?
So, no. So, the, the casework services that'd be provided on-site would be for those that are living there.
Okay. Excuse me. That answers one question, because that will bring, you know, the, there's your motorhomes and everything, right? Because you can't really necessarily control. And then the folks that, one example that was brought up were folks, yeah, you can't have, you can't park a registered or, or a unregistered or uninsured vehicle on the property. So the workaround is we just park it in front of Harper Freight and walk across the street. And that, that's a slippery slope too, potentially. So I don't know if there's a, if there's a plan to be a question, hey, do you, if you have a vehicle, is, be on the front end, right, to avoid that. I, I just don't want to add blight and, and, and problems to the neighborhood. I don't think anybody does. But that's a question that's not necessarily been fully answered yet. But I like the plans so far. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't mind answering. So, you know, early on in Harmony Village, an individual was trying to, or was trying to do that. We worked with our residents, talked with them, and ended, if you look at the field, like, a great example would be the field next door to Harmony Village. Every once in a while, someone parks there, but they get off very, you know, a lot of them get off very quickly. There was a, for a little time, there were some people parking there. We had conversations with them and they stopped using that. We also worked with, you know, the land owner at that site, just in case it came up in the future, to give us permission and we will have the vehicles towed off of there if that comes up. So if you drive by there, you won't see very much of that. There is a truck stop and sometimes people temporarily park there because it's right next to the highway. But other than that, I think it's been in pretty good.
I guess that's a down-in-the-weeds example that I brought up to kind of getting ahead of ourselves, but those are the types of things that I would like to at least address in the front end as much as possible for the quality of life of the residents.
Absolutely.
Should we move forward? I don't know. But once again, all for affordable housing are veterans. And what breaks my heart is these, these homeless children out there. I just, it gets me. And so I think we have a role to play in, in helping provide that. We talk about it a lot, but this is an opportunity to actually do something. But we also have to be responsible and make sure we're checking some boxes and some things are in place to protect the city.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Thank you. I'm going to try not to repeat anything that's already been said by my colleagues, because we've all covered it well. But I will definitely start with this, and it's Joseph and John, thank you for all you do for the communities, because I know your heart's in the right place and you guys are doing a lot of great work around. When we get to this project, same, same thing I told you when we met. We have to weigh this on the merits and not the heartstrings. And we need affordable housing. We need all housing. I've said that for three years since I've been on the council. It's not just affordable, it's all housing, because we've missed a lot of opportunity in our community. But this has to be on the merits and not on the heartstrings. And some of the questions that I have, and whether they're answered later, or there's a short answer, we can address this. And Joseph, some of these will be, if you want to fill these or not. You talk about how this is not a homeless program, but in one of your early slides, you talked about the obstacles and how this solves homelessness and how this helps law enforcement. And if I'm the average person here in Yuba City and don't get to sit down with you guys for hours and hear all this stuff in the background, I hear this can solve the, help solve the homeless problem, but it's not a homeless shelter and it's not part of it. And it confuses us all. So how can you say you are in, but you're not a part of it?
Sure. So I think the big issue here is, when so, when it's permanent housing, the people live there are homeless. They're, they're living in housing. This is where they're going to be. So they're not hanging out on the streets. When you have a shelter, you have, the people will typically be out during the day wandering around, and they're going to see the same type of experience they've seen in the past where people are out in the streets. If you have a place to go, they're not going to be hanging out out there. They're going to have a home. They're going to have a safe place, and that's permanent housing. So anyone who's living there is not going to be amongst that homeless population. Now, people who have experienced homelessness, those at risk, have the opportunity to, to move into that place, and that makes them, as I said, no longer homeless. They're permanently housed, if that makes sense.
It does if I've sat down with you for hours. But, I mean, I use that as an example, because we'll never get to that answer tonight to have it fully understood, I don't think, because you do have to understand a lot of it. But I think that is one of the obstacles that our community has, is, is this a homeless shelter or in the homeless program, or is this really low-income housing? And we keep weaving those topics and those terms back and forth. And it's not just this project. It happened on the one on Garden Highway that RHA brought before us. It's going to be homeless, and then it turned into low-income, and then it turned into whatever it is now. I mean, it's just continued at least three morphs over time. But I bring that back because my next question, and, and Mr. Chaffin, this might be a question for you. We've all had to live under the Boise decision for a while now. And while Home Key is tied to homelessness and making them not homelessness, the first question I asked was what Councilmember Boomgarden asked earlier. He's like, you guys aren't going to be around here for 54 more years. John, I trust you. I've known you and you've been a friend a long time. And you said, I don't think so, Dave. So what happens when John's not here? And how can another organization or different leadership or political pressure or anything use the Boise case to turn this into something that's not presented here tonight? We're talking 54 years out. I know it's pure speculation, but this is a reality we're living in. So what is our safeguards on that?
Thank you, counsel. Just for the public, the Boise, City of Boise case is a recent case regarding homelessness, where the federal court essentially found that you couldn't take a certain sort of enforcement actions to stop sleeping homeless individuals or other people unless you had full housing or an alternative housing site available to them. So it really effectively hampered the public entities and the city's ability to help clean up certain areas and ensure that homelessness is not happening. So part of that effort in order to address the City of Boise case was to engage in housing services that would provide housing to the homeless so they no longer be homeless. And therefore, any homeless that you did have, you could have available beds at homeless shelters, et cetera. One of the challenges that cities have faced when they do have organizations that do provide housing is the type of commitment that's involved, your contractual obligations, and the limitations on those. Because whether you're a nonprofit or for-profit, or you have a private, private-public partnership, say that fast three times, there's always a chance of bankruptcy. There's always a chance of funding shortages. There's always these questions out there. You can put in certain protections into a contract, but as they say about contracts, they're only as good as the paper that they're written on. So you can try your best in order to minimize your risk, and there are steps that the city can take, but there are no guarantees.
Okay. I, I thank you for that. These are just questions. Like I said, this, this is a much bigger topic than we're going to get to tonight, but these are questions that come up on all of our minds. Echo the sentiments about other properties. Oh, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I just want to mention, one of the differences, I think, is part of this is there is a 55-year commitment. The initial commitment is five, that the property stay in that and that the program run for five years. The 55-year commitment, it's like, goes with the land. And what it does is it says, hey, this property is low-income unless this note is satisfied. So if, say, 20 years passed and the property, and you didn't want to do this service anymore, or John or I weren't there, the property could be sold. It is an asset that the city has the right to relocate within this program. So if the city goes, oh, we're done doing this 15, 20 years from now, they can sell that property. And in 15, 20 years, property's probably going to be worth more than what's owed on it at that point. So, I mean, that is a ability to do that, to, to sell that off and not have to continue this project if the city were to want to go in that mode.
That actually led right into one of the other questions I had. What's the other strings attached to it? Because five years, 10 years, whatever, down the line, we decide you guys are no longer there, city wants to sell it, is the city financially obligated and morally obligated to relocate all the people that live there? And what's that burden going to put on the, the city? Because obviously, if we end up in that case, you guys aren't there. It's, and I, I probably not here in 20 years, you know? So we've, we've left a hornet's nest, so to speak, down the line. And, and I don't mean none of this negatively. John, you know, Joseph, you, I just talk very candid, and I'm looking at what might happen 10 and 20 years down the line. And so what would be our obligation? Would we have to relocate them, provide them more housing? There's got to be something out there on that.
Yeah. So I think what happens in that case is if you sell it to another property owner, that could be the obligation in selling it, that they, they maintain their tenancy and then they would deal with the tenants. So you can sell it with the exception that those tenants still live there. Or they can choose to move out. So there may be some relocation. I don't, because I don't know what it's going to be in 20 years, like if, if, how, how the laws may change on relocation or what those requirements may be. Typically, I know, I believe within the city, if they do force people out of a property or something to that effect, that they're required to provide relocation. I think, though, if it's sold and those are part of that selling of, of that property, that could go without that. The city can also sell the property for more than what they would owe through this process to HCD if they chose not to go with the commitment. So they could sell it for a higher amount, keep that, use that for relocation. If 20 years from now, the property's worth twice as much, then they can use some of that difference to do that if that's something that's required at that time.
And more than speculating 20 years out, we're, you're looking at applying for a grant. So I'm curious, the grant has to say something in there, because you both told me about the, the, basically the buyout provision, where we could sell it and do that. So if it tells us we have that authority, the grant probably tells us somewhere what we have to do with the residents when that occurs. And that would be, you know, we can, you can respond in writing to that. That's fine. But those are things that we need to know. And then...
So I was going to say, I think we, we did provide that material a while back. I don't know if it's made it to the attorney at this point, but we did provide that, I think, to Ben. I don't know if Ben can speak to that.
So we reached out to HCD just to confirm what is that commitment? Is, is there a way to sell it? And basically, what they're saying is that it, it has, the sale would have to be approved by HCD. And, and then, in your, let me read this, HCD email. Transfers of the prop, so this is directly from Steven Block with HCD. The transfers of the property would have to be approved by HCD, NOFA Section 604, with the requirement that the city still continues that, 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 a permanent housing unless it was approved. And so I guess on a staff level, when you have a housing element with needs, it's going to be an, an argument or how are you going to work through that? Not to say it couldn't happen, but there's definitely a discussion.
All right. Thank you. Just the last couple of things, and then I want to open this up to the public. So we'll come back to the public in just a minute. But have you looked at other properties that's lesser in scale? That would be a question to answer. We do need a business plan, start to finish. We talked about that in our meeting, and Councilmember Boomgarden brought that up. We need to know services in there. We need to know exactly what's going in there. There's a ton of partners that's been mismentioned. But we've heard rumors of services relocating over there and stuff. So we need to know exactly what's, what is the real plan. And then, not only community support, we've got to have businesses support up and down Cluse Avenue, Downtown Business Association, because we're all going to be impacted. And then, back to the point about the community outreach. As one of five, I see us, if we go down this road together, as a partner. But I see Habitat being the lead agency on this. And those community outreaches really need to be handled, in my opinion, by Habitat. Getting out, meeting with the businesses, meeting with the community before we come back together in, in January or 18th, or even a little bit before. Because we're, we're the partner, but you guys are the lead agency. You guys are the ones with the, the dreams. Okay? Anything else from the council before we open it up? And Joseph, I'll go back to you in a second.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to add that, I mean, good comments across the board from the council and, and for Habitat and Joseph and Ben. I really appreciate all the information. We've been receiving quite a bit of details that outline some of those questions as well. But one issue that I think is really, really unclear in my mind is the density aspect of where that location of Bonanza is, meaning, you know, 130, 100, whatever, a number of new residents, if that were to be the case. And the high density of that is a little bit challenging in the aspect of quality wraparound services with a full gate, people coming in and out constantly, and then residencies around and businesses around. There, I, and the roads on that area seem very narrow. So there's a lot of work that would need to be done, you know, by our public works and trying to figure out how to fix some of that road issues. I, because there's, there's a lot of congestion already in that particular area. And then, so that density aspect of multiple community in, in that area. The other locations that you have right now seem to be in a further outside area where there isn't as much population running through in the sense of walking, you know, shoppers, cars, yes, possibly a lot. But it seems further out. It seems not in a higher density of the community that where this one seems to be proposed to us. And so I think as you're at, walk, you know, trying to answer some of those other questions, how is that a realistic quality of, for those individuals that we're thinking possibly to, if, to, were to be placed there? And then, all of the other road, sidewalks, businesses on the back, and the three-storage one on the other side, that kind of just flows over to... one on the other side, that kind of just flows over to all aspects of the community in that area. And you don't have to give me the right answer right now, Joseph, but I'm just curious of how that would play out in this whole plan because there, and that's not including the wraparound services of everything else. And then, then on top of that, there's a consideration for the convention center to be engaged and active for use, right? And I'm not sure what that restaurant idea is being considered of the current existing business. But I'm, those are questions that I still have that are not clear. And it's really, I mean, it's, Bonanza at one point was an extremely high-producing, everyone was there using, you know, weddings, activities, and it's really sad that the existing owner of that business is not as genuinely invested to the existing property. And that, that, you know, that hurts my heart a little that I wish they would invest more so in, when they buy things like that in our community.
All right. With that, Joseph, I'd like to actually get on to the community at large, because I have a lot of cards here. And so we're going to take the cards first that came in, and this is just the order they were handed to me. John Nicoletti, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd prefer to take a pass and let residents speak. One clarification I'd like to make in the, the first question that you asked was the definition of homelessness, or not having a definition of homelessness, and how does this make room in the whole system? So just like policing has advanced and firefighting has advanced, we all recognize the improved professionalism comes from those two sectors. Health and Human Services has advanced. It's not sexy, it doesn't make a lot of headlines, but they have paid close attention to how to administrate what they do. Working with a local homeless consortium, which we have now in Uba Center, working with organized NGOs to supplement what Health and Human Services can't get to, helped us develop our life building center, the training programs that happened at Hands of Hope, both at Spiva and at F Street in Marysville. And then we moved into the tough sheds, so Better Way. And when you go into Better Way, you don't just sleep in the tough shed all day. To accept that tough shed spot, you also accept a number of rules and regulations. I call it a training facility. So they get goal setting happening every 20 days or so, they have to check in, they can stay for up to 80 days. In that time, they go through financial training, they do job readiness, they look at just general life-building skills. A lot of folks that have, have been living homeless forgot how to fill out forms, didn't need to. And so that's not going to work in a, in a normal society. As people get trained, a lot of those folks, especially seniors, that have successfully achieved kind of a graduation status, if you will, from that environment, that's when we take those applicants and start looking at who moves into these apartments, these efficiency apartments. If they are really messed up and emotionally strained, then we talk to behavioral health and we take a different route of service. It's more service before their dwelling. Here, this is permanent living that happens to have extra services just to keep you on board. Now, if they fail in our environment, then they go clear back to the river. They just go back one step, they stay in our system. That's a big part of the partnership with the county. They're really good at casework, and we kind of help these people get back up. It's not always an easy road. But we are aware of the fact that folks that are close to homelessness just need a little nudge sometimes, a little bit of resource, and they are up on their feet and going. And that's really the difference from down here in the bushes, into the emergency stay, into the training places, now into permanent housing. So they've had some preparation to get to what will be, what you'll see, you know, when you see residents at Bonanza. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Pat Bruner.
Hi, I just want to say that I'm a resident at Harmony Village, and I really like it there. I wasn't homeless, but I was close to it. And I just feel really blessed that I'm able to live there, feel secure. Everybody's very friendly and outgoing, and you look after one another, and you help each other. And I just feel real good about living there. And I'm thankful that I can wake up in the morning and I have a warm rip over my head and a cool spot in the summertime. So I don't know what else to say.
Anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
I can't think of anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Ma'am, I missed your name.
Pat Bruner.
Pat Bruner, thank you.
And I'll ask, even if I say your name off the card, please state your name and address for the record when you, when you step to the podium, please. So Victoria Jaeger.
I'm Victoria Jaeger. I live in Penn Valley. I'm General Chuck Jaeger's widow. So if I cry, just, I'll just keep going, don't worry. I really, really was impressed with the presentation, and I really was impressed with all of your questions and all of the things that each and every one of you has considered. I think they're very apt and great. I was really, I haven't been to one of these meetings, and I really appreciate it. And while you don't want to, you know, pull on the heartstrings, how many of you have said, "Thank you for your service to a veteran"? Right. And how many of you have meant it? Right. Thank you. Actions speak louder than words, as we all know. I'd hate to think of General Jaeger and all the maintainers if they had limited resources not having a place to live. So, so I just want to remind everybody, let's put our actions where our words are. And especially with the neighbors, I understand the concerns, I really do. But maybe it's up to you to thank a veteran for their service and get involved with Habitat for Humanity and help them figure it out with you. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Jaeger, if I can just add, I met the general when I was stationed at Bill. Incredible man.
Thank you. Well, you know, General Jaeger and I worked with John Nicoletti on a project, and that project had languished for 10 years. And then John stepped in and boom, it was done. With General Jaeger's help, I have to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Tom McFerrin.
My name is Tom McFerrin, and I live at Harmony Village, and I'm a resident. And I'm one of those guys that kind of lost in the system. I was disabled many years ago, but I didn't want to receive services. I didn't want help, I wanted to be independent. And I fought it for many years. But then I had a heart attack, my fourth heart attack, it put five stents in my heart. I died twice. And the recovery was different than other times. I've had other heart attacks, and this was very, very difficult. And I was living at the time off a mobile home park in Sutter Street. I owned the trailer, owned my own car, I was working. But I couldn't continue with what I was doing. My, no, very, very little income. Trailer was falling apart, shower was broken, the restroom was leaking. It was difficult to cool, difficulty to heat. It was constant problems and the fact that I was having difficulty getting around. Couldn't afford my car, I was two years behind in the licensing, got a ticket for $900, couldn't pay that. Trailer was getting behind in its license. I was just getting further and further behind. And then a gentleman I know and precious friend, Charles Ernst, who is a 30-year retired PD here in Uba City, he came to me and he said, "Tom, we've been watching, we know you." He's a friend of mine, he goes to Cornerstone Church, he's an elder at the Cornerstone Church. And he came to me, he said, "We've been watching you, and we're inspired by you. We want to help you. So let me introduce you to a place." And they brought me over to Habitat, the Harmony Village. And I'm a resident there now. And I have a shower, I have a place to sleep, a little bit different, the real bed, not like I would have slept in my trailer. And I'm, and now I've lost all income. As I'm in the middle of applying for disability, Social Security disability, I have no income. But because of the housing, because of what Harmony does for people, I actually couldn't have, afford to have somebody help me. You know, where I was staying before, in this trailer, in a little tiny gravel lot, it was costing me almost $1,000 a month, and I wasn't making much more than that. And now, I can afford to live there, and my church is able to help me until I get my Social Security situation set up. So I, and I, and I'm, I'm very active in the community. I know the people there. I know the management, I love them to pieces. They're truly having an effect in people's lives. And, and because of my relationship with Charles, I know the history of that hotel. That hotel was not a good place. It had a very bad reputation. And when Habitat came in, it completely changed. And, and he's a property owner, and he's the one that introduced me. He was, he was property boarders Habitat there and Harmony Village, and he, he just, he's sold out for this organization, and he introduced me to it. And I'm, I'm just, I couldn't be more proud. If you have any questions about what it's like to live there, or what it's like for the people, the management that takes care of that property, let me know, because I can answer any questions you got there. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Going to shift gears slightly. Thank you to our city clerk for pointing this out. We did have two written requests that came in 24 hours prior, so they each get five minutes. So I'm going to ask Maria Smith to come to the podium. And again, my apologies for not bringing you up first, as you submitted in Apple time.
Mayor and council members, thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk tonight. My husband and I have been residents on Orange Street for 30 years this July. Our neighborhood has been slowly going downhill. We've been battling the homeless situation and crime, and our grandkids go to the park and our animals come in the house with human feces on a regular, for a while, on a regular basis. I'm, I understand Habitat is a wonderful organization. I am all for affordable housing. We are involved with our church. I am a teacher here in the community. We, they, I'm involved in lots of outreach programs. Sorry, I'm going to have to look at my notes.
Sierra, could we pause the timer for just a moment, and we'll give you a few more minutes, ma'am?
We have...
Ma'am, we can wait just a minute so that everyone has your attention.
I appreciate that Habitat has brought representation in, because it's good to hear testimony. But the facility at Harmony Ridge is much, is a much different situation than the Bonanza Inn. 65 seats, or 65 rooms of single living, single residences is a lot different than 130 rooms of potentially double-occupied residencies. Our house faces Maple Park. It's a lovely neighborhood. Our back fence is 10 feet away from the back stairwell of that back building. And I know that the, the police department said that there haven't been significant events back there, but in, in the last 10 years of our 30, it's been almost unbearable. We've had things thrown over our fence, drug paraphernalia, condoms, you name it. We have to check our backyard before we let our grandkids go in the backyard. So it's a lot, it's, it's, you know, I understand that Officer Ernst borders, right, borders the Harmony property, but, but I guarantee you, his backyard fence isn't 10 feet from 130 rooms full of not just veterans, not just elderly, people with medical issues, which I am fully supportive and, and supporting, and, and children. But it's, you know, they're putting lipstick on a pig here, to be honest. I should have my glasses on. We raised our kids to work hard and to give a hand up to someone in need. We get up and go to work every day, you know, to work for what we have, to work for what we need. And I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that this has gotten to this point without us knowing about it. We, we voiced our opposition a year ago, August, when we got wind of this through the county. And we thought, when we heard about Harmony Ridge on Highway 99, we thought, problem solved. Fremont Hospital, Bonanza, they finally decided on a good spot for this facility, until a week ago. And that's when we heard of this through rumors, and just received a letter from the city on Wednesday, six days before the council meeting, and today's four days before Christmas. We should be with our families, not here, sitting through this council meeting, having to defend our property. You know, it's, I think it's wonderful that the city is going to have, be able to sell this property if something goes downhill. I think it's a hornet's nest from the get-go, to be honest. The location is wrong. But we, as homeowners, aren't going to have that benefit. We're going to take a cut right off the bat in property value, because we have to disclose by law that we now have, instead of a hotel 10 feet behind our fence, which used to be a high-quality facility. My grandparents used to get all dolled up and go to lunch there, you know? I worked for a company that went there for lunches, you know, once a week. It was, it was, you know, a place to be, place to go. And unfortunately, the new business owner is from out of town, he doesn't care about the community. The reason it's, it's fall, it's in bad condition is because he didn't take care of this, this building, this business, because he has no vested interest in this community. So, bottom line, we're against this location. And I don't think anything's going to change our mind about the location. And if I could take 30 more seconds, half of the homeless population in the United States lives in California. 30% of the homeless pop- 30% of the homeless population in San Francisco came, migrated to San Francisco after they became homeless. They didn't become homeless because of the housing costs in San Francisco. They came there for the services. They make rational decisions to go where the restrictions are the least and the services are generous. Seattle, 51% of the homeless came to Seattle from somewhere else after they became homeless. So I am the biggest supporter, I'll support veterans, you know, till the day I die, small children. But we have businesses around town that are hiring for $18 an hour. Our daughter and son-in-law have a business in Sacramento. They've been vandalized by homeless multiple times, and it's out of their pocket. And they can't get anybody to come and work. Their employees are demanding upwards of $20 an hour to work in a pizza restaurant. So I don't, I mean, I have a lot of sympathy, but I'm just, my bottom line is, this location is not the right location for this.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Patricia Jaeger to come up, and she also has five minutes. And my apologies again for not calling you up first.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Grace, thank you for taking the time yesterday to come and talk to me. We are not hard-hearted residents opposing Habitat for Humanity. We are concerned by the lack of transparency. This was dropped on us like a bomb a week ago Friday. We thought we had cleared this issue up of our feelings a year ago, August, when we were potentially one of the places where Habitat would be. I'm a strong supporter of Habitat. I also work in, with our church, with rest program, feeding the homeless. Okay, we're considered low density. And if Habitat acquires the Bonanza, we potentially have 240 guests in our backyard. We built 45 years ago. And I can't imagine the negative impact on our neighborhood. The residents of Maple Park have called the YCPD all too often in regards to noise, illegal drug use, loitering, alcohol abuse at the Bonanza, the Old Bride Church, and Maple Park. We are surrounded by the less fortunate, and it's time to evaluate the direction the city is going. Do we want to center our town, do we want the center of our town to be a constant reminder of low economy? I would think any new business looking at a new location would have second thoughts for, for a bright future, close to the proposed project. We need to pump up revenue and encourage business growth. It would make more sense in a place where there was planned development, not in the center of Uba City. I'm curious how much stimulus money has been provided to the Bonanza. Stimulus money has been available to restaurants and motels during the pandemic. The Bonanza has been painted in the front section and appears to be a well-maintained building. However, the back, the back building has little or no improvement. We have had broken down cars, RVs with running generators that run day and night. We have dealt with foul and abusive language. We have had bottles and cans thrown in our yard and with, with used needles and drug paraphernalia. The north backside wall has been hit by a car or truck, and there was a gaping hole for many months. Now, there's a patch, no paint. All of our fences were painted white at some point, but have certainly not been maintained. The previous owners gave us permission to plant trees for privacy. For our residents and yard, these trees were cut down without notice, were taken out of, and we were taken out of privacy once again. The trees had been there for approximately 15 years. We have become, we have, we have balconies and stairwells that put, that are put in our right facing our property. If this is a bailout for someone who purchased us a property in good condition and offered us a substantial amount of money and leaves our community with no attachment whatsoever, we would like the council to review other options. And we've talked about that. It's, it's, I don't think people need, need a handout. They need a hand up. And I think that there are other locations that are better suited. The demands, the Bonanza had a great restaurant, bar, coffee shop, meeting room, and convention. All these amenities have disappeared, and the community cannot support what isn't there. Build it, and they will come. Rather than this is the, rather than to think that this is the only option, let's communicate and come up with a better plan to serve our community. This project will definitely have an impact on the value of our property and cause tremendous emotional stress. I invite all council members to our home and view this project through our eyes. Thank you for your time. And we look forward to hearing from you with a different approach. Sorry for the emotion.
Oh, thank you. Next, we'll have the cards from tonight. Louis Rodriguez, three minutes.
Mayor, council members. I live at Harmony Village, okay? I can only tell you my story. A year ago, I was living in a garage. Somebody broke into the garage, took everything I owned. I'm a Vietnam vet, okay? I went to the VA, they put me at the Rio. For a little while, didn't like it because I just, I was starting to get sick. I've had three operations in the past six months. One knee, two hips, okay? Now, they brought me to Harmony Village, and I met with Patty. I fell in love with the place. It's safe, it's secure, there's nothing to worry about. I don't see what other negative talk is about it, okay? If I wouldn't be in Harmony Village, I would be homeless. I may be parked under your house, you're right, no, but no. Harmony Village helped me. They gave me a chance to be safe and to be a productive person once again. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Julie Gil Sheffield, and I'm a resident of the City of Uba City. This is an issue that's deeply personal to me. I have many very close family members that have been in low-income housing here in this community or are currently on the waiting list. And so hearing that there's over 714 people on the waiting list, I have a close family member on that waiting list. When I look at my father-in-law, who has now passed, one of the things that was most important to him was to have the dignity of being able to stay living independently. And low-income housing provided that. And the residents of the low-income housing, they still are like family to us. In fact, they'll be celebrating Christmas at our house. They go to our kids' performances. They're family. They're, they come to our home. But having availability of housing that they can afford, I think Joseph had tremendous stats about Social Security and disability. And when you look at that disparity between the cost of housing and the amount of income they have, it is important to provide those options. It's not a surprise that there's inadequate housing in this community. I did go back and look at the agendas and minutes of the city council meetings and the Board of Supervisor meetings, and I don't see a lot of low-income housing coming forward. I do see, you know, on Hooper Road, there's some housing, not low income. On the James Scott property, there'll be 56 dwellings made. They're not low income. So one of the questions that I would have to this council is what efforts are being made to have a proportion of the housing stock that is being built be low income, and what's the availability of that? And when you look at, you know, our neighbors to the south, like in Sacramento, it will always be cheaper to have nonprofit partners. There was some discussion about whether there could be bankruptcies. Let me remind everybody, cities have gone bankrupt too. So there is a very real possibility of that happening. But when you look at the cost of what Sacramento has now spending on homeless housing, they took a hotel that they already owned, and they spent $450,000 to rehabilitate a 250-square-foot unit. That's just to rehabilitate it. When you take the numbers of the all-in costs, including the operating, the program, and all of that per unit, this is $208,000 per unit to build, renovate, and operate. There is a, that is a much better use of funds. And in reality, these are taxpayer funds that will flow through the state for our community. So I too have questions. I would love to be staying engaged and learning more about it, but I do think that we have a real shortage of low-income housing in this community and housing in general. And so I really applaud the collaborative efforts that Habitat's done. I look forward to their engagement with, especially with residents living nearby. And if I could, please read a letter that I have from a resident of Maple Park area, out loud. This is from Doug Smith. May I read that into the record? Would that be okay?
Counsel's discretion. You're good with it?
Okay. And then I'll give it to the clerk as well. So, members of the city council, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share. My name is Doug Smith. I'm the pastor of Hope Point Church in Uba City. I live at 1015 Maple Avenue. It feels weird reading somebody else's address. We, as a church body, have been partnering with many groups to provide love, support, restoration, and basic needs for our homeless population. We understand the many complexities of caring for the homeless. I'm offering my support for the city to allow Habitat to purchase the Bonanza. We've seen the fruit of Habitat's labor, as they have made the Uba Sutter area a great place to live. Our church will continue to engage in loving our community and caring for needs. Doug Smith.
All right, thank you. Next up will be Manny Cardoza, and behind him will be Johnny Burke, if you guys want to get queued up.
Mayor, City Council. First of all, I just want to let everybody know that I am for affordable housing. My platform, when I ran back in 2016, was to help the homeless and the veterans, which I still uphold today and still try and help this need. But there's the pros and cons of everything. The pros, yes, this is a great program. This is a great thing. Everything's wonderful within that complex, within that community. These citizens, the neighbors in this area, they're concerned about the things outside of this complex in this community. So I've heard a lot of stuff. The council's asked a lot of questions. A lot of my stuff has been answered. So the only thing I would like to say is, it's a wonderful thing, but it's not the right location. They need to find another spot. This is considered, that is considered the heart of Uba City. And like the lady, the person just before me said, we should make it a wonderful hotel and convention center and restaurant once again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, and if Mr. Ernst would be queued up right behind him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Johnny Burke. I'm the Executive Director for the Sutter-Uba Homeless Consortium. I haven't been here in a while. It's cool to see the new faces. Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, new city mayor, our mayor over here, manager over there, new mayor, vice mayor. It's exciting to see you all again. I'm here just on behalf of the Sutter-Uba Homeless Consortium because of the affordable housing aspect of this, which everyone understands and recognizes. Mayor, you asked a great question earlier. Why are we talking, why does Habitat partner with a homeless consortium? Why are we talking homelessness when we're talking about affordable housing? Which is it? And if I can just add my two cents to that, on behalf, I was at one of our shelters the other night talking to a gentleman. And he's staying in the shelter. And I said, hey, he said, hey, can you get me on Habitat's list for that, that place out by Walmart? And I said, well, I'm not in control of that. You know, have you gone there and checked out? And I said, do you have an income? He said, yeah, I get like $1,000 a month. But $1,000 a month doesn't get you anything anywhere unless you can get in one of these projects. If Bonanza was open today, under whatever new village it'll become, for, he would have a spot to be able to stay. So that's where it ties in, because as soon as he becomes housed permanently, there's another spot that opens up at our shelter. Should that spot remain open, that allows our law enforcement to be able to do enforcement, because there's an option to give to somebody. That's what the Boise case is all about. It's about the fact that people have a right to lay their heads somewhere. And so if you want to move them from wherever they're at that they're not supposed to be in violation of one of our ordinances, you have to give them an opportunity. I'm sure you're all aware of this, but many of the public aren't aware of this. So if we can, right now, in this cold weather and winter shelters, of all of our shelters around here right now, as of yesterday, there was three beds available. So I don't know that law enforcement can go out and do any enforcement in the next couple of weeks unless some spots open up. The more affordable housing we have, the more we can offer for that. There was a suggestion about, can we find a different spot, you know, and those are all great questions. The council should be made aware, as well as the public, and I know that Habitat didn't mention this, 1.45 billion sounds like a ton of money for California, and it truly is. But this program's already running. Last week, California announced the first round of awards. They gave out $113 million. This morning, they announced the second round, $105 million. If these keep going like this per week, that 1.45 billion is going to be gone by March. If the council passes on this and doesn't do a resolution at the next council meeting, I believe that this project will be lost, and there won't be a second option for Home Key 2.0. Now, good news, the state has talked about having a Home Key 3.0 if things continue along, if the funding seems safe, but we don't know next year's budget. We have every indication from the governor and legislature, they will continue along with that. But just so you know, if this project should be passed upon, you likely won't have another shot at grabbing 130 units of affordable housing in a quick fashion. So I just wanted to throw those things out there, just to let you know that the homeless consortium supports that, because it does help the homeless problem. This is not moving people from the streets into housing. Just like Mr. Nicoletti said, there will be people in shelters or at risk. In the last several weeks, we've received many calls. Over the last year and a half since I've been Executive Director of the consortium, I've tried to put my phone number and name out there as much as possible, so if folks had a question about housing or homelessness, they'd give me a call. I've gotten numerous calls over the last few weeks about apartment complexes that were purchased and got new owners. We had some over in Uba County area where we had a bunch of folks that were served 90-day notices because the apartment complexes no longer wanted to accept Section 8 vouchers. These folks were being evicted, not because of any problems in paying their rent, because they had vouchers, their rent was paid with the previous owner. They had no problems there. They had no write-ups. They had no issues at all, except the new owners wanted to charge more and did not want to accept any voucher programs. So we had calls. I had a calls, I had a call from a mid-70-year-old couple saying, we're out. We've lived in this place for 19 years. Where can we go? And I had to say, start hitting Craigslist. Start hitting, you've got to be on top of it. It's so competitive. You have to find a place. And unfortunately, regional housing does the best they can, but they issued the vouchers for Section 8. They're not able to find the place for you. You have to go out and find it yourself. Habitat works hand-in-hand with Bridges to Housing and Salvation Army and some of our other RAPRE housing programs to help folks that already have vouchers to get into places. So there's a lot of good opportunities here. I just wanted to share those things with you as you get to make a big decision in a few weeks. And I'm sure that everyone's pulling on your ears right now. But the consortium certainly supports this project and the increased affordable housing. If you read the Appeal Democrat last week, you'll know that regional housing was quoted as saying, we can't build affordable using, affordable units fast enough. Our local economic development commission just recently proposed that, based on projections, we're looking at a 34% increase in population in our area over the next several years. We can't build affordable units fast enough. So this is a great chance to grab 130 in one quick shot with a great organization. So, looks like I'm out of time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ernst and Carol Howe, if you want to queue yourself up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilmen and councilwoman. I live at, my name is Charles Ernst. I live at 1020 Letter A Oswald Road. I think some people have already mentioned my name and where I live and what I do and what I did do. what I did do. So I was a policeman here for many years. The best thing that happened to our property was Harmony Village taking over the Lexington. The Lexington, I'm going to be a little crude, was frankly a whorehouse. Half of it prostitutes, and the other half, whatever. There was many a time I was working out in the walnut orchard that we own, and it's not uncommon for me to have a young lady walk through my orchard, and it was pretty obvious where she coming from and probably what she was doing for a living, moving from one truck yard to the other, unfortunately. So, and then Harmony Village came in. I was opposed to it, like some of the residents here. We did not want Habitat for Humanity to take that over. But as I got to know them and learned how it worked, and now they've been there about a year, a little over a year, all those problems that we're having are gone. People walking across my walnut orchard, unquestionable people are gone. Needles are gone. Homelessness coming through my property, gone. So I don't know what else to tell you, other than I opposed it at first, and now I will never oppose it. My problems are gone. My value of my property has gone up because of very common knowledge. Our narcotics unit did many, many raids out there over the years and took down some big-time people out of that motel. Bonanza, I don't know. When I was a policeman, I did respond to Bonanza, but not that much, like the Lexington. It sounds like the Bonanza is going downhill. Who is to say some other person is just going to come in from the Bay Area and buy it and let it go down further? You guys are worried about what's going to happen in five or 10 years. You can't predict who's going to buy that motel in five or 10 years. You can't say what they're going to do with it when they buy it. You can't even say what kind of people they're going to let live there when they buy it, five years from now, 10 years from now. At least you have Habitat for Humanity. You've got a great reputation. They do. And you know what kind of people they are. I know you're questioning, are they going to be around in five or 10 years? I'm assuming that organization, which has been around 30 years, has had turnover at the top levels many times. So why would they not put another person in there? Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carol?
Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Carol Howe, and I was born and have lived in Yuba City my entire life. And I've seen many changes, a lot good, some not so good. I have compassion for the homeless and their struggles. But I also have a great feeling for the longstanding taxpayers who have been here all of their lives. If the project plan for the Bonanza property goes through, many in the nearby area will see their property values decline. There are already problems with the Bride Church and the Maple Park. Is it fair to these long, law-abiding taxpayers to have this in their neighborhood? I would think there would be other suitable locations for the projects instead of the heart of Yuba City. I agree with Harmony. I think that's a wonderful location. I think Habitat is doing a great job. I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with this particular location. And as far as Section 8, I have had opportunities to work with them, and I'm sorry to say, it's been a disaster, an absolute disaster. And it's left, all the damage is left to the landowner to repair, and it costs a lot of money. I don't really know what to say, other than the fact that I really am opposed to this location, and I hope that something more suitable can be found, something more like Harmony Village or the one you're speaking of in Yuba County, and not be such a decline on the local people that have worked all their lives to build and maintain their homes and, you know, been good, honest people in the community. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Before we open it up to further public comment, we have Sutter County CAO Steve Smith. Would you like to make some comments tonight, sir?
Thank you very much, honorable mayor and council members. Steve Smith, county administrator. I think you've heard from a lot of folks and the county's experience with Harmony Village is that it made a drastic improvement to that area. I know the sheriff wrote a letter of support that maybe was read before I got here or will be read, but it reduced calls from 192 in 2020 until Habitat took over in November to, I think, 27 over the past year. So pretty drastic. As Mr. Nicoletti mentioned, folks going into these type, this type of housing are not the people you see that upset us, that are camping out in front of stores or doing things like that. These are people that have gone through some of the systems that county HHS and the city partner on and take advantage of. We know every place in California is short on affordable housing. The governor, what, 10 years ago, took away redevelopment, and there's a tool we don't have anymore. The hotel, again, yeah, we don't know what's going to happen at the current location, if it will, someone will come in and restore it to its former glory, or if it will stay the same or possibly deteriorate. None of us know that. You've heard from at least three people here, and you've seen that the people that live at Harmony Village are good people, are upstanding citizens, are veterans, or people who are just trying to live their lives. So I do keep hearing people talk about homelessness, and I respect everyone's opinion here, and it would be difficult, you know, if it were going right beside my house, too. So I totally understand that, and I'd have to think about how I would feel about that, though I would much rather have a Harmony Village-type project by my house than a hotel who I have no idea who's going there, and anyone can go. And sometimes the government puts people up in those hotels, and we, they can have any kind of background, and they get put there, and sometimes we're forced to do it. Whereas in affordable housing, you have good staff who are thoroughly reviewing people and checking on their backgrounds to make sure what kind of people go there and make sure that they're participating in programs. I know one thing we want to avoid as well is, the city of Chico was recently forced into a settlement with a, I believe, CRLA, and in partnership with Butte County, they're being forced to build 350 units. And I know we can't afford that around here to just, out of our own funds, go build that. So that's just my perspective. I think the council asked great, great questions, and it is a tough choice because it is right in the middle of the city. So I really respect you taking this on, and it's a very difficult decision, but thanks for giving me a few moments to talk. Oh, and also, I don't believe, the county gave No Cares Act funding to the hotel, so they didn't benefit from any of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. This time, it's open for further public comment. If you would like to make a comment on this, please go to the podium, state your name, address, and we'll, you have three minutes. We'll just line up.
Hello, city council. My name's Mike Morris. I live on Queens Freeway down the road. We're bound, the part that I don't understand is, is it going to be for seniors or is it going to be for homeless? Is it going to be for senior, seniors that are going to be homeless? Or are we going to open it up and have homeless people with seniors?
So, right now, we have obviously a vast number of individuals who are experiencing homelessness or at risk. What we're finding is the greatest population going into that situation are elderly individuals, as you've seen the individuals living at Harmony Village here today. And there's so many individuals in that experience that, you know, we may have someone who's disabled, who may be younger, but the vast majority are going to be veterans and seniors, if not all. I mean, we can't say that, you know, if we serve all the population, there has to be 10 people left. We're not going to try and at least get them into housing, but we're going to prioritize those. And based off the numbers we're seeing, we're pretty sure we can fill up the facility with that situation, because, like I said, with the social security issues that are coming into place, it costs more to rent a place than an elderly person gets on social security in full.
Right. It's just, there's both ends of that candle, and I'd hate to have someone that's been living off the streets next door with the, with my grandma. You know, that's the only question I have right now. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Thomas Burns. I got a question for Joe. Okay. So, first of all, I do want to say that it was a while back that the, they built a skyscraper over there on Percy, not Percy, but by Richland Housing. Okay, so my office is down the street. I go by there all the time. And there's quite a bit of loitering going on there. When I'm always seeing some loitering around there. I never have no time for loitering myself, but that is an issue, you know? People don't like to see people just standing around doing nothing out on the street all the time. But my question for you, Joe, is, this is your business. This is what you do, okay? So, and I know this might be deep, and people might not want to take the time, but I was raised in the 1960s, '70s, okay? We didn't have these issues. So being, this is your cup of tea, why don't you tell us why you think we're in this situation today? Because this is a, this is an American situation that's despicable, really.
Yeah. You know, I'll be careful on the level of detail discussed for it to be respectful people's time, but in the 80s, I think 70s, 80s, they got rid of mental health facilities. There was a big removal of that, and it released a lot of people because they were being this managed. People were being taken to the level of torture in those environments. So they said, hey, no more mental health facilities. We're going to work with people through different types of sources to help them rebuild their lives. And I think that was the thing that started some of that. But I think what keeps precipitating and keeps it going is housing. California, we're talking about, other states sometimes don't have as big a problem with homelessness. Housing in California is extremely expensive, and the amount people generate doesn't cover it. As I kind of showed in my slide, that's taken from direct data, 11,509 people on poverty. That's people who live paycheck to paycheck and could be amongst those, you know, removed from apartments. The people are buying buildings right now, and we're seeing a vast number of people entering that. What we're going to see is we're going to see an increase in chronically homeless people if nothing gets done about this. You know, like you guys were saying, the, you guys are already dealing with this. This is not something that we're going to bring coming there. You guys are already dealing with needles in your yard. You're already dealing with this huge number. And if that building sits derelict another five years, you're going to have another, you're going to have twice that population sitting out there, twice the needles, twice those things, because there's no housing being done to take care of that. If we don't have a place to put people, they just continue to grow. And that's kind of what that situation we're dealing with. So it started with mental health, and it led to lack of housing to continue and perpetuate this. The longer people live in the street, the more they became institutionalized to that way of life, the harder it is to transition them. We leave them for another year, and another year, and another year, the problem gets worse. It doesn't get better.
Next, next speaker, please.
Well, I'm James Burgess. I live at 602 Angely. I share a back fence with Bonanza Inn, and that back fence now is falling down because people lean against it. People that are there, people stand up on the, and look out into my backyard. I've had the issue, in fact, I had Officer Ernst over there dealing with things, at least twice that I know of, where people threw beer bottles at my dog, you know? And then also, I'm concerned about the lower property value. You know, how's this going to affect us? Is the city going to compensate us? You know, is Habitat for Humanity going to compensate us for the lower, lower property value? You know, what's, what's going to happen in regards to that? We've lived there since 1993, and we have had this issue. The first owners that were there at Bonanza Inn, they did an excellent job. In fact, they were the ones who dealt with the people who threw beer bottles over my fence. They, and as soon as he sold it to these new owners, it went downhill. And I agree. I have no problem, you know, housing people, but I believe this is a bad location. We have just four blocks away, the old buildings of Fremont Hospital that have been sitting there for years, not used. And yet, right now, they just want to jump right in, and we get three days' notice that this is happening? Thanks for sneaking all your, your people over, you know, from the other place. Give them plenty of time, plenty of knowledge, and everything, and give us three days. We appreciate that, okay? And I do have a concern for the homeless. I do have concern. I have great concern, but it needs to be taken someplace where it's not right next door to residents who are paying taxes. That's what we're concerned about.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Mary Lee Bondslett, and I live at 647 Bird Street. So we, we are within walking distance. We're neighbors of these people. My question is, what is the screening process for these residents that are going to come there to live? John Nicoletti, Nicoletti's comments suggested that there is a process, that they go through this step, kind of step-up process. So is that the case for all of these people? Are, in other words, are they already in the system and before they are allowed to live here? And, because if that's the case, then they're not being just taken off the street. Because that's, I guess that's our confusion, is that we have a homeless problem in our neighborhood. They are, they're stealing things off of our front porches. I've, I've missed a lot of stuff that was delivered to my house. There is a problem. And I, I want that problem to be taken care of, but it doesn't sound like they're just taken off the street and put into these homes. So that's one question I have. You know, what is the screening process? The other thing, are family units accepted into these places? In other words, will there be children there? Because in the, in the apartments next door that you suggested are already low-income housing, those are family units, and I, and that's another concern. We are, we are right near King Avenue School, and that's a concern. The little children walk to school right past the Bonanza. I mean, their parents walk them, but they're walking past the Bonanza to go to school. And so, does this allow for children, or is it just an adult complex? And, and then I guess my, my other question, and what is the law, like, if I want to sell our home, what is the law regarding disclosing that there is low-income housing in our, in our neighborhood?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph, if you could very shortly answer those first two questions? And then the final question is a legal question, which is not of the jurisdiction of this council. I would suggest talking to a real estate attorney or a Realtor to get the proper advice. Joseph, can you answer those questions very quickly?
Yeah. So the process that they go through, they obviously apply for an application. It's typical of homeowner, of any sort of rental housing. The focus is on individuals and couples. So the issue is, is there's mostly studios, so we really can't have families living there. It's not appropriate for a kid who's, you know, seven, eight, you know, It's not appropriate for a kid who's, you know, seven, eight, you know, living in the same room as their parents, things like that. So, we keep the focus there. That's, and that's where we see it, the vast majority of our problem is with these elderly individuals. As far as the process, some have been on the waiting list for years. So they go through this process, and it takes them a long time. They'll come in every month, make sure their stuff's waiting, and they just wait and wait until we can sit through them, because there's just so many. So, if that answers the questions. I, I can say this, I, like, we're not into the understanding of like the, the real estate element, but we understand that low-income housing, I don't think they list it as something that's comparable. There's an apartment complex already next to it, so I don't think they're going to factor in that there's one or two apartments that have low-income housing versus it. In my understanding, we do a lot of appraisals and a lot of property purchases, and that has never come up.
Any other comments from the public tonight?
Can I make one comment?
Yes, Kami.
Sorry, I'll be very quick. So my name is Kami, and I work in administration at Habitat for Humanity. And I just would be remiss if I didn't really acknowledge the, the residents here that are upset or feel sideswiped, as you said, you had three days. The Home Key funding comes out, and it comes out really, really quickly. And what, and it's an incredible amount of work on behalf of the nonprofit and the county to do that work that it takes, just like it last time. And so there is, there is a lot of work that happens until we find out, can we count, is this something that we can do, and now we need to talk to the community? When Charles Ernst was up there, we did actually go into the backyard of those residents, and they were just as upset as you are. I, they really were. And we formed a committee, and we met with them regularly and let them know that they could express, we're good neighbors, we're going to be good neighbors. Somebody knocked down your fence? Not cool. One, that's a violation. They're putting their housing at jeopardy, a housing that they've worked really, really hard to attain. And so when you're saying, how are we, we're calling it a homeless situation, but then we're calling it affordable housing, I think it bounces back and forth a little bit, because when we call it homeless, everybody goes, mm-mm, no, we don't want homeless in our backyard. But we are helping the homeless, because people are working really hard. Some of them are working really, really hard to change their lives and to get housed. And so, when they go through all these steps, affordable housing is normally in communities that has more crime, more drugs than they were used to at the river bottoms. And so they will leave housing and go back to the river bottoms, because that's where they feel more safe, because the communities they can afford to live in, people are not making a choice to have a better life. So, that's the really big difference, and I think that's why Charles and all of those community neighbors became such advocates. And I forgot your question, but I really wanted to answer it, and I apologize.
My question was, is it going to be for, is it going to be for seniors, or is it going to be for homeless?
And, and people that were homeless, people that are at risk of homelessness, like the, the housing, that structure, the building that was purchased and didn't want to accept vouchers, that was devastating. There's a post right now going around about the 90-year-old woman in Wheatlands whose house was dilapidated, and you have a lot of community members just outraged by it. But that is the homeless people that are being housed there. And so, when we come in and people move in, we do put up fences. We, we have rules, they, they can't have visitors at all times. So all of these problems that people were seeing, they actually, they dissipated. We can't promise 100%, but we can promise that we're going to be the best neighbors that we can, and we want to make this community a better place for all of us, 100%. But I understand your frustration, I really do, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kami. We're going to pull this back into the council now, as I don't see any other speakers, and I think everybody's had a, yeah, oh, yes, thank you. But we're going to pull it back. Is there any online comments?
No public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to pull it back to the council for final comments. Councilmember Harris, would you like to start? Okay. Councilmember Westmendola?
No. Mayor, but I thought Thomas had another comment. I don't know if he wanted to, or you're good. Okay.
If you could, if you could submit it in writing, we've already been at this for quite some time, and you've already talked and spoken tonight, Tom. I would hope be by tomorrow morning, because it is Christmas, brother. So, and so with that...
I have a question. It's an email question. I emailed them.
The emailed part was, in case things came in after tonight's meeting, we were leaving it open until 5:00 tomorrow. Since you haven't spoken, would you like to have your three minutes to speak tonight? Okay.
My name is Stephanie Mallard. I live on Orange Street. While I do understand everything everyone's saying here, we do, obviously, everyone reiterate that we have compassion on the homeless. I feel like our homeless and this situation are two totally separate issues, and I feel like the Bonanza's dilapidated state is a separate issue also. While we, as homeowners, can't control what is happening at the Bonanza and the state that it is, I believe the city council can, and the vacant property that my house butts up against with the old Bride Church. We have numerous issues with those and the homeless issues there, the crime, and again, the needles. I don't know if putting in a low-income housing is going to solve that issue. They talk a lot about the elderly going in there. I would actually like to know what percentage of your people in there are elderly and veterans. We've also heard that they get in there and become productive members of society. Are they being productive because they are having government paying the rent? And what percentage of the rent, they're saying they are paying rent, but what percentage of that rent to that facility is coming from that individual, and what percentage is coming from the government? I actually spoke to someone who runs the unit on Garden Highway, and they expressed to me, the only requirement of someone to move into there was to fill out the government housing application and be accepted. There is no further requirements of them after that. They will encourage them to take part of the other things that are offered to them, training to become able to work, any of that, but there is nothing required. So in essence, they can continue to resubmit an application every year for their government housing and have that covered for the rest of their life. So, the only requirement from them stating is, again, to apply for government assistance. And if they have no income, then that gets covered. So there is, there's no incentive for them to become a productive member. They've talked about the gated community. There's a lot of backlash when homeowners and developers want to build a community and have a gate around it, but yet we're readily agreeing to say, yes, we'll allow you to gate your community. But what about us homeowners that are already there to keep things out of our community? Talked about the three out of 40 of these projects have got accolades given to them, that they have ran them well. That is a very low percentage. That's not even 10% of these that they're saying are being ran well. So how are we going to say that this one is ran well? Given these, I have, you know, we have, everyone says we have a shortage of low-income housing, but what percentage of our town do we really want to be low-income? If we continue to continue bringing it in and just making more and more because we say there's a shortage due to people not wanting to go get jobs, some of that is, is very prevalent in this area, we are going to become an entire town of low-income housing. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. We will bring it back to the council. And Councilmember Boomgard, do you have any comments?
No further comments.
Vice Mayor? All right, we've had quite the discussion this evening. A lot of good points have been raised. We have a lot of research to do on the part of Habitat to provide us answers, to work with Mr. Moody and his team to bring us back answers. Our email will be open to receive further questions that need to be answered till 5:00 P. M. tomorrow. That is citiclerk@yubacity.net. I learned it, okay? Please submit those. This, at the latest, so everyone's aware, for it to come back before the council, the latest opportunity it would, would be at the next meeting, which is January 18th. So we want to make sure that you are aware. During this time, and I think you've already heard this earlier, I know from myself, I fully expect Habitat to take the lead, as they are the lead agency, and reach out to the community and answer the questions, because we need to evaluate this, this project on its merits. They're a great organization, but the questions come back, is this the right location and the right project for where it's at for our community? And then we've got all, everything else that goes with it. So, we're going to work towards answering that question, and thank you all for staying with us during this long session. This was very, very important for our community. With that, our city manager, do you have any comments on this, or any direction that you need from us before we go forward? Then with that, we are going to take a five-minute recess, and it's 9:02, so we will reconvene at 9:07.